Can you introduce the world about Link's office?
Yes, Natalia Chase, very, very nice. But it's all right to... She's a foodie, but I've never had such a big thing today. I've never heard of that. So I says it's a non-foodie, so you do it yourself. Just like you're selfish. I didn't know what is selfish.
Right, right, right. I didn't know either. They made it clear.
I know. I didn't know what is selfish. Asking him selfish or whatever. I'll see if I can. Oh, wait, I'm not gonna be in this.
No, no, you don't.
Did you have to talk with your leave? Oh, here you are. I'm so sorry. I was only looking this direction because I left it that way. Sorry.
Sorry.
Well, you're happy. So what do you get to? You email the picture? You have to go to your laptop in my car?
Yeah, I have to go to my laptop. I said that through faculty, which is a file transfer. Yeah.
Chair resumes a meeting at 8:50. His rise and sense of plan. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Drucker, would you be kind enough to just call the roll here?
Certainly. Mary Adams. Anthony Cronacio.
He's not here.
Tom DeGrasse is not here. Drucker here. George Gordon.
Present.
Wanda Jackson.
Present.
Edward Powers.
Yes.
Kathy Weiss.
Present.
Mr. Chairman, we have a call. Thank you, Mr. Drucker. I'd like to give approval of the minutes on the November 19th meeting. Do I have a motion to consider the minutes?
I make the motion.
Do I have a second? Is that gonna... All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
One abstention. I wasn't present.
Okay. Will is 5:01. For the course of the standing committee, we have finance and capital on expenditures over $100,000. There will be a motion to table an item considered by the board at the meeting of the November 19th. So I do settle to make a motion to table that expenditure. Do I have a motion?
We decided to leave that table.
This one was...
No, I'm sorry. I apologize.
This is just to open up... One of the items is gonna be a table. It is...
Yeah, okay.
So...
I'll move that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. All in favor? Any against? Absentions? Vote carries 6:0. We're... The first item is gonna remain tabled at this time. We're going to item B, page 3.
Resolve requisition number 61373-62158-62845 in the amount of $122,161 as requested by CIO ITS for the purchase of Hewlett-Packard PCs and Apple PCs for various campus departments and learn labs. Offices, classrooms, and labs throughout the college are in need of updated technology. This is a cumulative fiscal year expenditure. A total of $99,942.42 has been expended for this commodity or service this fiscal year, not including this proposed expenditure.
So do I have a motion to consider this item?
I make a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any against? Any abstentions? Motion carries 6:0.
Resolve that requisition 62631 in the amount of $325,099 as requested by the VP Financial... VP Facilities Management Design and Construction Department for the third phase of the campus parking renovation program, including the renovation of West 4A, West 4B, and West 5 lots. Design and bidding is planned to take place during 2014.
Do I have a motion to consider this item?
I make the motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any against? All abstaining? Vote carries 6:0. All right, I'm gonna make a motion of Article 4, Section 3F on the Board's rules of proceeding to allow for preparation on an item that does not appear on the calendar.
I second your motion.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions? Any opposed? Vote carries 6:0.
Resolve that requisition number 63583 in the amount of $68,000 as requested by VP Facilities Management slash Fiscal Plan for APX and Workday System maintenance repairs. This encompasses where I pay for their services. This is a cumulative fiscal year expenditure. Total of $95,500 has been expended for this commodity or service this fiscal year, not including the proposed expenditure.
Do I have a motion to consider this item?
I make the motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any against? Any abstentions? Vote carries 6:0.
Oh, sorry, the Brazilian thing?
Yeah.
Resolve that the Nassau Community College Board of Trustees hereby approves the supplemental appropriation in the amount of $37,000.
Do I have a motion to consider this item?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any against? Any abstentions? Motion carries 6:0.
Pardon? Nassau Community College requests a supplemental appropriation in order to properly close the books at 8:31:13 in the amount of $1,125,238 which represent revenues in excess of budget resulted from state aid and rents and recoveries to be used to cover a shortage in appropriations to salaries which resulted primarily from salary savings assumptions which did not materialize and retiree termination pay for accumulated time and leave which was more than budget. Revenue $1,145,238. State aid and rents and recoveries expenses the same. $1,145,238 salaries. Resolve that the Nassau Community College Board of Trustees hereby approves the supplemental appropriation in the amount of $1,145,238.
So do I have a motion to consider this item?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any against? Any abstention? Motion carries 6:0. All right, I am also gonna make another additional item. Make a motion of Article 4, Section 3F of the Board's rules of procedure to allow for the consideration of an item that does not appear on the calendar.
I second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any against? Vote carries 6:0.
Donation. Whereas Swinway Anywhere had acquired that 85 Sherwood Avenue in Farmington, New York were working to donate fabric and materials to the marketing retail fashion buying merchandising interior and fashion design department of Nassau Community College. And whereas the estimated value of the donation is $4,500. And whereas the department has determined that this donation will enrich the learning process for the students who take courses offered by the department and greatly appreciates this donation. Resolve that the Nassau County Community College Board of Trustees accept the donation of 425 yards of assorted knit spandex prints, 25 yards of woolen prints, and 10 yards of woolen solid prints from Swinway Anywhere.
So do I have a motion to consider this item?
I make a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All abstaining? Motion carries 6:0. All right. Again, I'm gonna make another motion under Article 4, Section 3F of the Board's rules of procedure to allow for the consideration of an item that does not appear on the calendar.
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any against? Motion carries...
Resolve that the rental fee be waived for the use of the Nassau Community College Open Purpose Room, Rules 210, 220, 251, 252, 253, in the college's center building for the purposes of the, quote, "2014 Nassau County Minority Women Business Enterprises Disagreement Business Enterprises Conference" entitled "Access: Opportunities to Growth", unquote, sponsored by Kenny Executive, Edward P. Mangano, on a date to be determined in April 2014, from 8:30 AM to 3:00 PM. And be it further resolved that all associated persons in the maintenance clause will be drawn by the user.
Do I have a motion to consider the item?
I make a motion.
Do I have a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any against? Any abstentions? Motion carries 6:0.
Professor Emeritus introduced by me. Nassau Community College has established a tradition of granting the permanent academic title of Professor Emeritus as recognition of distinguished and meritorious service to the college. It is awarded to retired members of the college who have been recommended by the president. The rank of Professor Emeritus entitles that person to attend and speak at departmental and faculty meetings at the college, to be listed in the college's catalog, to be retained on the college mailing list, to have use of the college's library facilities, and to be invited to all college ceremonies. Resolve that in recognition of distinguished and meritorious service to Nassau Community College and upon the recommendation of the president of Nassau Community College, the following named retired faculty members of Nassau Community College who retired after retaining the academic rank of professor or associate professor are hereby granted the permanent academic title of Professor Emeritus with all the privileges and rights of pruing there too. Carol Farber Carrington, Ann Kamisky, John Day, Hussein Amin, Deborah Gallagher, Joan Gordon, Bernard Gorman, Shwamith Kane, Jack Lubowski, Rochelle Meyer, Natika Newton, Philip Nicholson, Catherine Fogwall, Robert Pollak, Joseph Ryan, Ryan, Leonard Riznick, Catherine Smith, Richard Speckman, Richard Traynor.
Do I have a motion to consider this item?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 6:0. I'd like to have a round of applause for the Professor Emeritus.
This is with regard to the drafting of an RFP, just the drafting of an RFP for a presidential search firm. Be it resolved that the Nassau Community College Board of Trustees hereby address the college's office of procurement to develop what they draft request for proposal for utilization of the services of the firm, search firm, to assist in the selection process for the president of Nassau Community College. Be it further resolved that such draft shall be forwarded expeditiously, expeditionsively to the members of the board trustees for the review and appropriation thereof.
Do I have a motion to consider this item?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any against? Motion carries 6:0. I, again, will call... I'm gonna make a motion under Article 4, Section 3F of the Board's rule of procedures to allow for the consideration of an item that does not appear on the calendar. Do I have a...
I'll move. I'll second that motion.
The motion stands to send a letter on behalf of the Board of Trustees to Woodkeeper advising them of their obligations to perform within the contract and giving them an opportunity to cure their default or force the election. I call the Department of... Oh, for open discussion.
Yes, Dr. Gard, before we vote a rule...
We need to move it and second it, so I'll move the motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in... Any voter... Favor?
We're gonna discuss that.
We're gonna discuss. All right, so leave it there and then discuss it and then vote on it. Okay.
I would just like to make a couple of slight modifications to the letter.
Was it drafted by House Counsel?
Yeah, I'm not sure if it was drafted. It was here, made by Chuck.
It was sent by House Counsel.
On the third paragraph, the fourth line from the bottom of the paragraph, it started with the word several. I'll read the sentence.
It's all paragraph.
It's all one sentence. In light of the fact that the search process that was subject of the contract that was entered into between Nassau Community College and Woodkeeper has not yet culminated in the selection of a president for Nassau Community College and in light of the fact that the purpose of the contract that was articulated in its first whereas clause was to, quote, "to retain the services of the contract to perform executive search services for the college in order to assist the college's executive search committee with the hiring of the college's next president," end quote. It is the view of the... Then it says several members of the board. We have to delete the word several and just have it. It is the view of the members of the Board of Trustees that as of the present time, Woodkeeper has yet to... And it says entirely fulfill. It should be, take out entirely. They have yet to fulfill its obligations under the existing contract. And then it's, the last sentence says, "it is their view." It should be, "it is our view" that the fulfillment of these obligations... And then it has would require. Strike out would and just put requires. Woodkeeper to continue, and has to engage, should be, to continue to perform the services specified in paragraph 2 of the contract. And then the last paragraph, in light of the foregoing, the board would like to state its expectation that Woodkeeper continue to fulfill its obligations under the contract and as such, continue the search process. Furthermore, we would ask that Woodkeeper respond to this letter within 14 days of its receipt so that the search for a new president can continue promptly or so that it can make, it should be, we can make, a determination as to the legal recourse... And this is on the college's part that may otherwise be appropriate. I would say that determination as to the legal recourse the college must take as it deems necessary. I think that gives itself a little bit of a critique that I think Tony was looking forward his, uh... See how it's got that letter, Tony?
Yes, it does. The only thing I would want is that we have it there that Gross on June 24th sent the letter informing Woodkeeper that it was the intent of the college to continue the president's search process during that time. We should put here, I think, that despite requests from John Gross, Senator, and from... I don't want to put other college officials. The chair of the Presidential Search Committee in May and June 2013, that Woodkeeper continue its obligations of outreach under the contract. It didn't do anything. And that's very jumbled, isn't it? I'm trying to communicate the idea that there were some things they were supposed to do. Outreach, media exposure, advertisements, and other obligations to get a candidate pool. And they just didn't do it. They refused to do it.
Tony, I'd love to turn to you. Would that be something that people who pursued me much would be in a bill of particulars that would be issued to Council?
It wouldn't be inappropriate, but I think it's covered in the third paragraph, to be honest with you. And you know, if you're just not getting too specific, it makes the letter less effective.
All right.
I think it's covered because the third paragraph talks about the fact that they haven't fulfilled their obligations.
I've always said that Mr. Drucker is bigger than me and I will always buy by his determination on a case of matters like this. I'm happy. I'm satisfied with it.
Okay.
Vote? Any other discussion? Any other additions or relations to the letter? Would you like to vote on the letter as described by Mr. Drucker at this point? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries 6:0. I'll let the letter be changed, asked for the board, and, uh...
Who's signing the letter, George?
I'll sign on behalf of the board.
Yep. Any questions, Paul?
Yep. And we'll make sure that the letter's sent out certified, right? Okay? And would you copy the word, uh... As the letter goes out, please make sure that the board receives it, copy, all members of the board. I just wanted to make before this report of the president, I just wanted to report to the college that trustee Donnelly tendered his resignation yesterday and wanted to express that he had had a very good tenure here. But at this time, his work commitment was such that he was not only able to determine that was necessary. One of the things I'd like to do also is, I'd like to welcome everybody. Happy New Year for 2014. We look forward to working with the college and making sure that we're able to progress with bigger and better items. Report of the president. Thank you. I hope everybody had a good holiday.
Good.
And again, I'm sorry, one last thing. Apologies, unfortunately, well, the nature won last week. We had wanted to have this meeting last week, but hopefully everybody was home safe and did not have to try for that. Report of the president.
Good evening. I'm gonna keep this report short. I would like to join in aboard in recognizing all of the faculty who were bestowed with the designation of Professor Emeritus. And I'd like to give them another round of applause. Welcome back to Nassau Community College for another semester. I wish you all a very productive semester. And in the interest of the State of the Union for many of you that are interested in hearing that, I'm gonna keep this, my comments, short and say thank you very much. Welcome back.
I'd like to move to the speakers list. And would you be kind enough to carry each speaker again? Allow in three minutes. First speaker on the list is Natalie DeCubio.
Hi, everybody. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
It's Natalia. Dickerson. Natalia, with an N.
They spelled it wrong, sorry.
That's all right. I missed it. I am one of the instructors of lectures in the Link department. And I'm here to share actually good news with everyone to start off well. We've had a lot of successes in the program, including sending a lot of students to the main campus. We're the ones who help students who are struggling with their English, immigrants, international students, whether it was it helped them build that up so that they can be successful freshmen here at the college. For those of you who aren't familiar with our program, it's an intensive English program. And this semester, this past year in November, six of us presented at the New York State TESOL Convention. TESOL stands for Teaching of English to Speakers of Other Languages. So New York State TESOL is our statewide professional organization. And we, some of us also organized successful events for that organization. So that kind of puts us on the map in New York State for what we do. We had the Brazilians, the famous Brazilians this semester, 25 of them. And they all successfully exited the program. So we're really proud of that and it was really wonderful to have them. They were wonderful, motivated students. So we hope that there's more of that in the future. Then I and Ashley Pfeifer, who is our academic coordinator and fellow Link lecturer, were accepted to present at the TESOL International Association Convention, which is a big honor. It's attended by 7,000 or so attendees. And it's the biggest event of the year internationally for TESOL. So that's a big honor. It's the second time that Link professors are, Link lecturers are there. And that brings me to the big thank you to the Nassau Community College Foundation for a professional development grant to help us get there. So Maria Gonzalez especially instrumental in getting that to us. And we're really excited about it. In addition, to toot my own horn, because I might as well, because nobody else will, I also applied for a professional development travel grant from the TESOL organization, the international organization. And we got it! So, thank you too. So we wanted to share, thank you especially to Maria and to the foundation for helping us out. It's very exciting to us to be able to bring the best of what we do to professionals around the world and also to learn from them to keep up with our best practices. So, Happy New Year, everybody.
Congratulations, Natalia. Mr. Boyd?
Thank you. I'll be quick. I just wanted to wish everybody on behalf of the Academic Center a Happy New Year. And I'd also like to express my appreciation to the board for acknowledging the retired faculty with the titles of Associate and Full Professor Emeritus. So, welcome back. I hope you had a restful holiday. Thank you.
Frank President?
Hi, Frank President, Vice President, NCCFT. Happy New Year. Okay, Nassau Quick. This Professor Emeritus, I just want to point out, I hope that the college could come out with, develop a more responsive and timely mechanism for the Professor Emeritus. Some of those people on the list retired August 31st. And that means that until January, okay, they couldn't speak at department meetings. They don't have the email. They can't use the library or anything like that. If this is what Professor Emeritus gives them, there's been, you know, six months, all right? They worked an entire two. So I just think that the college could come up with a more timely mechanism to get this to the board and get this going. I just want to keep everybody honest that the $1 million deficit due to unrealized savings and payouts for retirees last year should equate into substantial savings this year in those salaries, all right, of all those retirees, okay, that made a lot of money. And whether they're being replaced or not by people making a lot less money. I want to point out that the, back in the A-Strat days, the financial situation that was presented to us resulted in the elimination of all the 30 full-time temporary lines. And some of those faculty came to this Board of Trustees, begging for some consideration for their jobs, okay? The NCCFT during that time tried to negotiate millions of dollars in savings and concessions to no avail to try to ease the financial burden on the campus, to try to keep those lines. And now they're told that during that time, that we were told that there was this financial emergency, all right, that $14 million, okay, were uncollected in fees. Now, during that time, both myself and several faculty members that are certified public accountants sat with this administration and walked through the budget. They explained to us how the budget was produced, then the all the different variables in the budget, and then presented this doom and gloom situation to us, okay? No way was it mentioned, all right, that there was $14 million worth of incompetence, okay? And that these faculty members lost their jobs, lost their livelihood, all right? And no one on this board, no one on this faculty, all right, were ever made aware and it had to come from the county comptroller, you know, four years later, all right, that this took place. And I really hope, and I heard you before in the executive committee, I know a lot of discussions were held, all right, but we are presently in contract negotiations, all right? And we have to wonder about, you know, just how honest and how forthcoming are the numbers that we're getting and the story that we're getting is being portrayed to us. So I just want to say that, you know, and it's interesting to find that the college's response to finding number one in the order of report is that, quote, "the gravity of the situation is not as severe as one may think when seeing such a large deficit." And that the ordinary financials include expenses for future payouts like health insurance and accumulated vacation that do not materialize in a regular budgetary financial accounting used for the reporting. Okay, so we hear nothing but doom and gloom, all right, about the financial situation that occurs at the college. And, well, we are going to prepare our own questions and responses to this audit, and everybody will be hearing about it shortly. Thank you.
Well, after Frank just yelled at you, which I concur with, I come bearing gifts. I, I wanted to, for the fir, your first meeting of the new year, give you what we gave our freshmen, our new students, an orientation this year. I think you'll enjoy it, not only just have a pen in my letter, but you can see how we orient our students and how we give them information on how to put their best foot forward, tips on being successful in the classroom, et cetera, and I believe you'll enjoy seeing that, and we also invite you from the Office of Student Activities to our traveling professor program. Fifteen of our faculty members will be speaking on campus this month about their really interesting travel experiences around the world. This is free, and so we hope that you will...
New orange. Oh, give me the orange. Orange would have flashed if I was wearing it.
Actually, orange goes perfectly with orange.
The pens are really cute. The pens are very cute.
Phyllis, thank you very much, and I would like to say that there's nothing ticking at the back. Frank, I hate to say it, had you hit that page, I would have been looking at someone. Last meeting that had been held over, there were two speakers, Fran Viskovic, they weren't on the list, and James Whitey.
I'm passing.
Okay. All right. That concludes the speakers list. Again, I'd just like to say how glad I am to be back at Nassau Community College. I look forward to two thousand and fourteen being a fruitful year for us. We're in the midst of negotiations with both unions. I think that that is something that we need to, as a community, come to consensus and be able to come up with something so that everybody walks away and has some sense of accomplishment. Our primary mission is still the most, utmost important thing that we do, which is providing a high-quality, low-cost education to the twenty-four thousand students that come here, and that is such a strong, strong position that we serve. So I just want to say thank you and Happy New Year to all. The next Finance Capital Committee meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, February twenty-fifth, two thousand and fourteen, at five P M., followed by the full board meeting. The board will open the public session between six fifteen and six thirty, and resume the public session at approximately, that'll be seven thirty. I request a motion to adjourn the meeting to a motion.
I think it's seventeen.
Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Give it adjourned and call it what?